This is Council Agenda. Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of September 1st, 2020. Introduction, posting a notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2019 where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and New York Star Ledger on December 23rd, 2019 and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2019. No, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.precipiny.net. At this point in time, I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the flag salute. Matthew Soriano, if you're there, since you have your head behind, if you can lead us in the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, man. At this time, we're going to go into roll call. Mr. Carruthy?
Here.
Ms. Graniani?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Frank Frederick Carr, CFO, CFO and CEO, Township Attorney Jim Lot, Council President. Do you have a call on me to begin?
Please.
Okay, upcoming meetings. September 15th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. is a regular meeting. October 6th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. is the agenda meeting. Approval of minutes, regular meeting of 7:21, 2020, and agenda meeting 8/11, 2020. At this time, we're going to go into presentations and reports. Mayor?
Thank you, clerk. Good evening to everyone watching and good evening to the Township Council. Nice to see everyone. I have two items to my report. The first is really something that I'm going to defer to our new business administrator who we have been keeping very busy the past 10 days, but one of the reasons why we hired him is because he's the kind of person that hits the ground running and goes full speed ahead and knows how to organize things and get things done. The first task that I put him with was a recommendation on a chief financial officer to give to me, so we had him reevaluate what was the process that we did in the candidates. So tonight, my recommendation is going to be Juan Uribe. And I'm going to actually defer to the business administrator as part of his report to introduce everyone to Juan and his qualifications and the process that we underwent. Second, and for the crux of my report, I'm going to defer this to Matthew Kavanaugh from the Green Team for Sustainable New Jersey. This is something that I've been wanting to do here in Precipiny. I think of the Green Team as two types of green. Number one, green, where we can do things that are smarter and better to make our lives and our air quality and our water quality better here in Precipiny and in New Jersey in a greener way. And also green in another way, a way that we can save taxpayers some money. Okay, especially on what's spent on the township with improvements that we can do. So if the IT department could please turn on Mr. Kavanaugh's microphone so he may speak. Mr. Kavanaugh, I yield the floor to you.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you, Council for having me. Thank you, Mayor. Am I able to share content or do I just speak to this and then send the slides afterwards?
You're going to have to speak to this. We could share the slides with them later. I could also get them printed out or emailed to them as well through the clerk.
Okay, that works. Well, thank you again. Thank you for the time. What we'd like to discuss now, and it'll take up a few moments, is to talk through a natural next step for the town to pursue an energy savings improvement plan through the Board of Public Utilities and New Jersey Clean Energy Program. So last summer, the town participated and had a fellow come that tracked all the energy and utility bills for the 12 municipal buildings, submitted those to New Jersey Clean Energy Program, which qualified us for what's called an LGEA, which is a local government energy audit. So this was free and we've since had all the audits done with the exception of the sewer plant. Those are completed. We had an exit interview with the New Jersey Clean Energy Program. And those steps, those prerequisite steps are the first precursors to enabling us to qualify for what's called an energy savings improvement plan. So this is a BPU and New Jersey Clean Energy Program that's managed and enables the town to enables the financing mechanism for the town to retrofit facilities for energy conservation and without upfront capital expenditures. So it's passed into law in 2009. Basically use the future value of energy savings to leverage and pay upfront costs over a 15- to 20-year project lifecycle. And there are only 14 New Jersey-approved energy services companies that can come in and do the extensive audit and retrofit that's required. But the law also mandates that this is a cash flow positive transaction from year one. So in the initial term of the mechanism, the town sees savings right off the bat from year one. And then after the financing is paid off, the savings is completely to the town after that. So we want to open up a BPU-approved request for proposal to the 14 energy services companies in New Jersey and start the process of vetting and looking for a total energy savings plan. There is no commitment at this point from the town. It's just to get the ball rolling and start the process of pursuing the energy savings improvement plan.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
This is Councilman Carruthy. I just have a quick question. Now, this is just pertaining to town buildings, correct? This is not for residences and stuff.
That's correct. This is just for the 11 municipal buildings and it excludes the sewer plant for now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Clarification, upfront costs are zero at this point?
Yes, that's right.
So in 2020, we will not have any bills?
Well, I wouldn't say no bills, but 2020 is going to be a very aggressive timeline to implement all of these savings because we have to go through the RFP process. The approval of the energy services companies and any subsequent contracts and any financing comes back to you all for approval through resolution or ordinance. But it is a 20, this is going to be a long haul. It's a 12- to 24-month process from, you know, this step all the way to final confirmation and commissioning of equipment depending upon what we actually install. But energy conservation measures could be anything from demand response equipment, combine heat and power, renewable energy, building envelope improvements like LEDs or insulation windows, any control systems or energy efficiency equipment, and also includes water conservation measures. So there are several towns that I have examples of like Pitts Grove, West Milford, Montville, and Denville, who have saved millions of dollars over a 20-year lifespan through this program. So it's a very good program for Precipiny to both save money and save carbon.
I'm there for saving money. I'm there for energy savings. But what I would like to see before we get much, as a part of this study, is what the upfront costs are going to be in each calendar year or a budget year and what our rate of return is, how long it will take to recoup those funds. That's not an unreasonable thing to ask for, I don't think.
Okay, and that information becomes available when an energy services company comes and does the initial assessment and evaluation of the savings potential. We won't have those numbers right now. Before we submit and go out to bid for energy services companies, it's hard to estimate the actual savings. But that's perfectly reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
And just to give you an example, some of the ESIP Energy Savings Improvement Plan examples that we have have paybacks in the range of eight to 12 years, basically, for the entire project cost.
Mr. Kavanaugh, Loretta Graniani, Kell Stormin, you mentioned finances. With these other towns that have implemented this program, what are the, what has the finances been at their end saying it would be over a period of time?
Yeah, so the examples we have is like a 3% to 4% interest rate. There's two primary options. One is a refunding bond option and the other is lease purchase agreement through the energy savings company, services company. So those are the two mechanisms that towns have typically used to finance the upfront costs and then get the payback over time. And I have some examples in this stack as well as more information to share about that.
Okay, the towns that have implemented this program. We have 11 buildings, not counting the sewer treatment plant. Are those towns also having the same number of buildings or are we one of the larger programs that possibly we will be joining?
For the ESIP examples that I've looked through, a lot of them were for education boards with four to seven schools. Those are elementary schools and high schools. So this is going to be one of the larger programs that I've seen. And that actually works to our advantage because we get a better, we can get a better interest rate and we can also attract the highest bidder for the energy services company.
Thank you.
With this and Janice McCarthy, do you have any, are you looking forward to the Board of Education and the schools joining the program?
I would highly recommend that we do the energy efficiency tracking, submit for the local government energy audit and follow the exact same process with the school district. You know, I don't know any context. I don't have any context around how to actually get that done, but this program is excellent for school districts as well and it would bring the same net benefit to all the schools that we have as well.
Yeah, you know, I see this as a pretty positive program going forward as these energy costs increase. So, you know, I think the return, when you do the calculation, is going to be very positive, it would seem to me.
Yep. And one thing I wanted to mention too is that a component of the implementation includes some renewable energy where it makes financial sense. And the federal investment tax credit for both solar and geothermal and storage aspects is set to step down year over year from this point forward and possibly expire in 2022. So starting this program now enables us to capture that tax incentive, which will be monetized and some of that will get passed on to the town, making this a better deal for us.
Right.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Kavanaugh?
Well, I'd like to see the handout when you get a chance, but it sounds like a great program, Matt. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for the time.
Councilmember McCarthy, I will work with the clerk to make sure you get that as soon as possible.
Sure, yeah. It's just interesting to see. Thank you.
Okay. Matthew, do you have anything else to say?
Just that this is a single action in a list of actions that we're pursuing regarding energy for the town and other initiatives on sustainability. You all passed the resolution to support the team and pursue Sustainable Jersey Certification. We have a very lofty goal to get gold standard in energy over the next five years and there's more to come. So thank you for the time and we'll engage as we go forward.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Last chance?
No, I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Janice.
When you have, you said there's companies that now they're going to begin to be vetted for the best one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So these are companies like Amaresco, Honeywell, Johnson Controls, Snyder's, Siemens, Tran, Willdan. So these are very large companies that are vetted and approved by the BPU.
Yeah, very good companies. Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Okay, just one last thing to the public. This upcoming Monday is Labor Day. As a person who was raised by a labor, blue collar labor union father and is himself a blue collar labor person, this is a very important holiday for me and my family. But when we think of what we've gone through in the past, my goodness, since this past March, I would also like to acknowledge the labor and the work by our frontline healthcare workers in the state of New Jersey and our first responders, the police, fire, our paramedics, the frontline nurses and healthcare workers. My thoughts are going with them this weekend and my prayers are with them also as we continue to ride out the rest of this pandemic. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Council President. Thank you, clerk. Have a good evening and enjoy your Labor Day weekend, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Where did Colet go?
Clerk Maiden?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was muted. I apologize. So at this time, thank you, Mayor, for the report. At this time, we're going to move to the Township Council. Council President, as you know, we have Mr. Carlo Delizio, our health officer here today to report on the Precipiny, on the COVID-19 status. So with your permission, Council President, I'll turn it over to you so you can allow Carlo to speak. If we can have Carlo unmuted, please, at this time. Are you there?
Yes, Colet, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Carlo, for being here tonight.
Okay, hopefully, if there's an echo, let me know because I'm in an empty room. Just want to thank everybody, you know, the entire governing body for your time and your continued support during this marathon of a pandemic. I also want to thank the entire team within my office and as well as under the emergency management umbrella for their tremendous exemplary work. And, you know, without them, there's no way we can ever do this. You know, now, I just want to go through just some general numbers and this is as of 5:00 p.m. today. We have 825 lab-confirmed COVID-19 cases, of which 820 are closed, so five are open. Unfortunately, I have to report that we have 83 lab-confirmed fatalities. We have also reviewed, and I'm not even going to round it, I'm just going to be exact, 10,239 negative lab results within the township. So we have, we have read a lot of information over the past, you know, six months or so. We have also are starting to get as of July, some of the voluntary travel or air travel advisories. So these are people that are traveling to these areas that are, you know, that require follow-up. So we've actually received 68 of them since they started in early July. Overall, staff's morale's been pretty good. We're learning how to rehab, how to get our minds fresh. We have, since last we spoke, collaborated with the Rutgers School of Public Health and the New Jersey Department of Health and Human Services to train some additional contact tracers in the event that there is a spike and all models tend to indicate that. So we need to ramp up and be ready. Overall, if you combine our staff along with the contact tracing team that were continued, that are continuing in their training, as well as, you know, other staff within our catchment area, we are at a total of 15 contact tracers. Theoretically, that should be enough for a population of 100,000, so we're good to go. We're ready. The one thing that we are focusing now, actually over the past couple of days, is with the governor, looking to opening up some indoor dining and some other additional parameters that were added as a result of the executive order 183. So we'll be pushing that out as early, hopefully it's on the website now, but we'll also push that out through our merchant community just to try to get these restaurants up and running as well as all the other merchants. You know, we've wholeheartedly, you know, supported the governor in all of this and he's had made some hard decisions. But, you know, the one thing that we can do is make sure that we get the information out as quickly as possible to help these people. And other than that, I think, well, and, you know, another concern that we are working on is our COVID-19 vaccine administration initiative. For those of you that remember during the H1N1 initiative back in 2009, that was also a robust vaccine initiative that we're looking to somewhat replicate with the exception of the appropriate social distancing parameters that we're going to have to adhere to. So, you know, we have a plan. We're in the process of ironing out some details and it's just a matter of waiting for the vaccine to come to get it out to the community. Overall, if anyone has any questions, I am ready and willing.
The big numbers, Carlo, kind of inclines over after a while. This month, to get closer, how many cases, active cases do we have now this month?
This month? Well, since it's the first of the month. I mean.
Let's say in August.
The month, I do not have that specific information. The one thing I can assure you is that we closed out probably 95% of our cases over the past month. Many of the cases that are coming in are manageable, so we're not, it's not like the beginning of the, you know, of the pandemic where we were getting, you know, 50 to 70 cases a day where we were backlog. I'll give you an example. Today, we actually received four, you know, four active cases. So we were able to, you know, to handle all the contact tracing, you know, expeditiously because the staff was able to do it. The issue does occur when you do get, you know, several dozen cases in the course of a day and that requires a lot of follow-up.
Okay, I have one other issue that I've had two phone calls from residents complaining about the Precipiny post office. That they don't see any sanitizing going on there. There's no sanitizers where the postal users have to use the pens and fill out forms or paperwork there. There's no spraying going on, no sanitizing going on. They say in general, the post office is filthy. So is that under your purview to review them or sort of?
It actually is not, but I'm, you know, I'm more than welcome to call the postmaster general. Which location is it or you want to go offline and let me know?
The Precipiny post office.
Okay, everything's always worth a phone call.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask, Janice McCarthy, can I ask how you would, how a vaccine would work and how you would go about administering that?
Just in reference to administering the vaccine, you're talking about the entire plan. I mean, it's, you know, we're hoping that it's an IM or intramuscular. If that's the case, which it looks like it is, it's no different than the, any clinic that we run, you know, four times a month within our office. The only issue would be because of the, you know, X amount or exponential amount of people that we anticipate coming, there are going to be some safety parameters, which most likely will be, you know, by appointment only. You know, we have a couple of locations that have the square footage to handle, you know, a throughput of several hundred people or persons that we can vaccinate, you know, over the course of four or five hours. So I mean, it's a huge undertaking. You know, during H1N1, and I don't have the data in front of me, but I think we vaccinated close to 8,000 residents over the course of a four-to-five week period. So we have the ability, we've done it before. I think the only rub or the only issue that we have now is that it's, you know, we're dealing with, you know, a highly infectious respiratory disease. So there's going to have to be social distancing involved and other parameters, unlike a standard, you know, influenza or CHC clinic that we run, you know, where you have families or patients that are, you know, within a room, we're going to try and spread them out.
Yeah, would you also have some, you know, protocol in place where it would be more at-risk residents or?
Oh, yes, that'll all come, all those orders, that's actually a very good question. All of those orders will typically be, you know, top-down via the commissioner's office and we tend to follow up with our own order from our medical director and, you know, just to make sure that we're consistent with the State Department of Health. Yeah, so they will determine, and it's a federal initiative, so in essence, it's going to be consistent, you know, across the nation, basically, as to how we administer it from a priority standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember Peterson. I have a couple of questions. Of the five open cases, can you tell us how many are at home and how many are hospitalized?
And that's actually a good question. When I receive, I cannot, I would say right now, and if you could hold, the last we had, we only had one hospitalization last week. So most likely, there's only one. The four that came in today were not hospitalized.
And do you know their ages?
I do, yes.
Are you allowed to share that with us?
Of the five cases?
Yes.
Uh huh, I can do that. Bear with me. It's not as readily available as you think.
Take your time.
Okay. 58, 29, 72, and 33.
58, 29, 79, and 33.
72, 72.
72, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then in terms of the vaccinations, is there any sort of flu vaccine initiative to encourage residents to get the flu vaccine?
Correct, we're actually working on it now. It'll be very similar. It's kind of like our pre, you know, pre-trial, so to speak, prior to the COVID initiative. But we do have our vaccine clinic, our influenza clinic. We're hoping, we're hoping to push that out sometime in early October. We do have to wait for the vaccine to arrive. You know, we, from a planning standpoint, it'll be very similar in that it'll be by appointment only. Most likely, it'll be, you know, one of several places that we have within the municipality and, you know, we also offer it to our employees as well.
And one last question. On the flu vaccine, do you know approximately within 1,000 people, how many got vaccinated against the flu last year?
No. In reference to CDC data or Precipiny data?
Precipiny data.
Precipiny data. Within our clinic, we administer only, I think it's several hundred doses of vaccine that we have readily available. The key is there are plenty of places that offer seasonal influenza vaccine. You have all your local pharmacies, you know, GPs offer them as well. So it's readily available. What we try to do is we provide that gap service to residents that are either, you know, uninsured or underinsured as well as our senior population as well or high-risk population. So we, you know, there was a time years ago when it wasn't readily available, you know, in my 26-year tenure here, where we were doing clinics with, you know, 1,100 people, 1,100 residents over the course of a three-day period. Those days are gone. It's just so readily available now.
Right, okay, thank you very much for your work. I appreciate it.
And thank you for your time.
Any other questions for Carlo? All right, Carlo, thank you for your time. It is appreciated.
Thank you so much, everybody, for your continued support.
Thank you, Carlo.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right, next is the Township Attorney.
Unmute myself. I have post session items as noted on the agenda, Chloe.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Next, we have the business administrator, Frederick Carr.
Thank you, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good, thank you, so, I apologize, my camera's gone to sleep, but I can see everybody fine, and I'm on my phone, actually from the voice. So, to go over what the mayor talked about, the selection of the CFO candidates, I, they called the council, and just for everybody to understand, I did interview the top two candidates, I had in-person interviews in my office, social distance, wear masks, all that kind of stuff, but anyway, we had a nice chat with both candidates, then a further conversation with the mayor, and then at the end of the day, you know, there were two both, oh, both excellent candidates, but, you know, the answer at the end of the day is, you have to have a tiebreaker, and the tiebreaker was experience as a CFO in comparable municipalities, I strongly believe that one is that man who has that depth of experience coming from a large municipality right now. With the council's approval tonight, I asked the council to appoint him this evening, so that tomorrow, we can start the process of onboarding him or bringing him in, his first official day would be the twenty-first of September, I spoke with him today briefly, and said that tomorrow we'll talk, and on the twenty-first, you need to come to work, you know, bright and early in the morning with a pair of running shoes, because you need to hit the ground running hard, because we have a lot of things that have to be done last week. Council has any questions, that would end that, end my comments for this evening, and thank you for the, for our most exciting and busy ten days.
Thank you, Fred. Next township clerk, I do not have a report, we're going to move along to the township offices and committees, anything from the council? Okay. Seeing none, now we're going to go into the engineering report, and I'm going to go ahead and read the engineering report into the record. Twenty-twenty roadway resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, construction began in July and will continue through the beginning of September, no council action required. Green Bank Road Safety and Improvements Project, the project is substantially complete, and only minor punch list items remain to be completed, a section of new guard rail still needs to be installed once underground utilities are moved. Closeout of the project is expected in September, no council action. Township offices and committees, anything from the council? Okay. Seeing none, now we're going to go into the engineering report, and I'm going to go ahead and read the engineering report into the record. Twenty-twenty roadway resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, construction began in July and will continue through the beginning of September, no council action required. Green Bank Road Safety and Improvements Project, the project is substantially complete, and only minor punch list items remain to be completed, a section of new guard rail still needs to be installed once underground utilities are moved. Closeout of the project is expected in September, no council action required. Various Streets Reconstruction Project, the various Streets Reconstruction Project is substantially complete, and all punch list items will be completed by early September, no council action required. New England Drive Milling and Paving Project, the New England Drive Milling and Paving Project will begin construction the week of July twenty-seventh, work is planned to continue through the beginning of September, no council action required. Simpson Avenue Required, Various Streets Reconstruction Project, the Various Streets Reconstruction Project is substantially complete, and all punch list items will be completed by early September, no council action required. New England Drive Milling and Paving Project, the New England Drive Milling and Paving Project will begin construction the week of July twenty-seventh, work is planned to continue through the beginning of September, no council action required. Simpson Avenue Retaining Wall Project, the Simpson Avenue Retaining Wall Project construction start date has been delayed, but construction is scheduled to start the week of July twenty-seventh. Work is planned to continue through the retaining wall project, the Simpson Avenue Retaining Wall Project construction start date has been delayed, but construction is scheduled to start the week of July twenty-seventh. Work is planned to continue through September, no council action required. Veterans Park Culvert Replacement Project, bids were received for the Veterans Park Culvert Replacement Project, a pre-construction meeting has been scheduled, and construction will begin in the middle of October, no council action required. Mount Tabor Street Improvements Phase Five, Mount Tabor Street Improvements Phase Five Project was bid in July, a pre-construction meeting has been scheduled, and construction will begin in September, no council action required. Veterans Park Culvert Replacement Project, bids were received for the Veterans Park Culvert Replacement Project, a pre-construction meeting has been scheduled, and construction will begin in the middle of October, no council action required. Mount Tabor Street Improvements Phase Five, Mount Tabor Street Improvements Phase Five Project was bid in July, a pre-construction meeting has been scheduled, and construction will begin in late September, no council action required. Roadway Design Projects, the following projects are in design, putting Stone Heights Road Improvements and the Various Culvert Repair Project, late September, no council action required. Roadway Design Projects, the following projects are in design, putting Stone Heights Road Improvements and the Various Culvert Repair Project, these projects will be bid once design documents are finalized, construction is anticipated to start later in the summer, no council action required. Community Rating System CRS Program, we continue to work with our consultant and the NJDP to get back into the CRS Program, this program provides discounts on flood insurance policies based on level of activities in which the township participates, the work will continue through the, at least the end of the year, these projects will be bid once design documents are finalized, construction is anticipated to start later in the summer, no council action required. Community Rating System CRS Program, we continue to work with our consultant and the NJDP to get back into the CRS Program, this program provides discounts on flood insurance policies based on level of activities in which the township participates, the work will continue through the, at least the end of the year, no council action required. Fox Run Developers LLC Performance Guarantee Reduction Block Ninety-eight Lot Twenty-two, year, no council action required. Fox Run Developers LLC Performance Guarantee Reduction Block Ninety-eight Lot Twenty-two. The developer has requested a reduction of the performance guarantee to reflect site work completed on the project, inspections conducted by this office reveal that a reduction is warranted, and all work associated with the performance guarantee reduction has been satisfactorily completed and is in accordance with the approved plans. This office has no objection to the approval of the reduction to the standby letter of credit, reference number nine sixty-one dash SB to the new amount of, the developer has requested a reduction of the performance guarantee to reflect site work completed on the project, inspections conducted by this office reveal that a reduction is warranted, and all work associated with the performance guarantee reduction has been satisfactorily completed and is in accordance with the approved plans. This office has no objection to the approval of the reduction to the standby letter of credit, reference number nine sixty-one dash SB to the new amount of seventy-eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars, a resolution will need to be adopted by the township council. Seven Hundred Mountain Way LLC Performance Guarantee Reduction Block Fourteen, seventy-eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars, a resolution will need to be adopted by the township council. Seven Hundred Mountain Way LLC Performance Guarantee Reduction Block Fourteen Lot Nine. The developer has requested a reduction in the performance of the performance guarantee to reflect site work completed on the project, inspections conducted by this office reveal that a reduction is warranted, and all work associated with the performance guarantee reduction has been satisfactorily completed and is in accordance with the approved plans. This office has no objection to the approval of the reduction to the standby letter of credit, reference number one-one-one oh-seven dash SB Lot Nine. The developer has requested a reduction in the performance of the performance guarantee to reflect site work completed on the project, inspections conducted by this office reveal that a reduction is warranted, and all work associated with the performance guarantee reduction has been satisfactorily completed and is in accordance with the approved plans. This office has no objection to the approval of the reduction to the standby letter of credit, reference number one-one-one oh-seven dash SB to the new amount of two hundred and eleven thousand zero twenty-two, two hundred and eleven thousand and twenty-two dollars, a resolution will need to be adopted by the township council. Water Z to the new amount of two hundred and eleven thousand zero twenty-two, two hundred and eleven thousand and twenty-two dollars, a resolution will need to be adopted by the township council. Water Z at Parsippany LLC Performance Guarantee Reduction Block Four-Fifty Lot Fourteen. The developer has requested a reduction of the performance guarantee to reflect site work completed on the project, inspections conducted by this office reveal that a reduction is warranted, and all work associated with the performance guarantee reduction has been satisfactorily completed, as in accordance with the approved plans. This office has no objection to the approval of the reduction to the standby letter of credit, Z at Parsippany LLC Performance Guarantee Reduction Block Four-Fifty Lot Fourteen. The developer has requested a reduction of the performance guarantee to reflect site work completed on the project, inspections conducted by this office reveal that a reduction is warranted, and all work associated with the performance guarantee reduction has been satisfactorily completed, as in accordance with the approved plans. This office has no objection to the approval of the reduction to the standby letter of credit, reference number zero D one-six-zero zero-two-two-three-eight to be a new amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, reference number zero D one-six-zero zero-two-two-three-eight to be a new amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars, a resolution will need to be adopted by the township council. Moving right along to bids, taken July twenty-second, twenty-twenty, the Well Drilling and Installation Services Replacement Production Well, twenty-one dash R, July twenty-third, twenty-twenty, reconstruction of various streets in Mount Tabor, Phase Five, July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, lease on public property, five hundred and forty-one dollars, a resolution will need to be adopted by the township council. Moving right along to bids, taken July twenty-second, twenty-twenty, the Well Drilling and Installation Services Replacement Production Well, twenty-one dash R, July twenty-third, twenty-twenty, reconstruction of various streets in Mount Tabor, Phase Five, July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, lease on public property. August twelfth, twenty-twenty, one new twenty-twenty-one sixteen-foot freightliner M-two one hundred and twelve extended cab with company. August twelfth, twenty-twenty, one new twenty-twenty-one sixteen-foot freightliner M-two one hundred and twelve extended cab with crane for Parsippany Rescue and Recovery. August nineteenth, clarifier improvements, to be taken, September third, twenty-twenty, Klondike Booster Station upgrades, quotation proposal and qualifications, none. At this time, we're going to go into the public portion of the agenda, and I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Carriff, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call to Carriff.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy? Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, we're going to be in the public portion, the public will get five minutes to speak, I'm going to see if you have your hand up, and if we do, we will then go ahead and unmute you, and your time will start. I see here, we have an Amanda Ugarte, if we can please unmute Amanda.
Hi, good evening, thank you for the time, and thank you all for all of your work for Parsippany, I'll be brief here, I think it's important to give you a little bit of background so that I can then kind of give you my request, you need the color. So, again, my name's Amanda Ugarte, I'm a seven-plus-year resident of Parsippany, I reside here with my husband and our two kids, ages seven and three, we purchased our home on Peter Press Road in July of twenty thirteen, and just to orient you all, this is one street over from Intervale Elementary School off of Bell Road. When we bought our home, and up until earlier this year, we had a very private sanctuary in our backyard, it protected from noise and passersby, because there was a lot of trees back there, the privacy was eliminated, and a problem was created as a byproduct of the Manor Lake Project. This project, as I'm sure you're familiar, cleaned up and dredged the lakeside drive end of Manor Lake, and created a clear, free-flowing body of water there, however, it created a swamp in my backyard. To add insult to injury, the new inflow of water flooded the area, killing the root systems of many of the trees that had been providing privacy there, and those were cut down in March to sort of April of this year by the Parks and Forestry Department. So, the new swamp that I now have in my backyard poses two issues, first and foremost is safety for my three and seven-year-olds, and then also for neighborhood children, students at Intervale Elementary, and those that are exploring Manor Park right across the street there, we've seen them kind of in this area all summer now, the area that was once woods is now a green algae-covered standing water, of various depths and quicksand-like consistency. In addition, given that it is a large expanse of standing water, the mosquitoes are now out of control, it's to the point from the safety of the sort of mucky area, as well as the mosquitoes, that I can no longer allow my children to play in the backyard. Secondly, you know, the unsightly mess in the back there has devalued my property, because it is, you know, as people call it, the swamp, literally, and it's also created a lack of privacy. As evidenced, we listed our home for sale about a month ago with a longtime area realtor, Kathy Walsh, with Keller Williams, and we've had prospective buyers pull into our driveway and refuse to even come into our immaculate home after viewing what they call also, the swamp, and, you know, happy to provide kind of detailed feedback from our realtor on this point. My husband and I would really, you know, like to request a resolution of the issue, we spoke to Jim Walsh in Parks and Forestry, he had headed up the Manor Lake Project, we were directed to Justin Liza in Engineering, from there to the clerk's office, and ultimately to this council. Specifically, we would like two things, one, we want to put up a fence, and to be clear, and this will be at our own expense, we've gotten a quote, and it would be, you know, in the order of six thousand dollars, which again, we will pay for, but we want to put the fence on what is technically town property, and, you know, so want to ask for permission or at least guidance in order to do that lawfully and expeditiously. Secondly, I think it's low on the list, but we've heard from Jim that there may be more cleanup that is kind of slated to happen in the swamp, but he's waiting for it to drain out, so, you know, longer term, we would like to see that done, but, you know, as a near-term fix, we would really like to be able to put up the fence, and that is our request.
If I may, I know that I had spoken probably about a year ago to another resident in your area there, I had many conversations with our previous business administrator, I know he went out and visited the area there with Justin Liza, our engineer, and there was supposedly some work, and they had a plan to try to rectify these issues, I do not know if that work has been completed, I know it had been started, I think since the pandemic came about, that work might have been stopped, so I, maybe, Mr. Carr, if you could look into that?
So, I have my notes here, and I do not remain, so in my transition file, I did not see anything with regards to the swamp, but I will certainly find out about it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Can I ask why, just ask McCarthy, why, why was this project undertaken at the beginning? What was the purpose of it? Is that for note?
The Manor Lake Project, so the water was not free-flowing over at that end of the lake, and so it was dredged, I know that it was a years-long effort that was undertaken by some residents on that side of the lake, I don't really have more color than that.
Well, yeah, do we know why it was done, besides the dredging, and did we understand that this was the result of what was being done?
As I recall, there's a dam in the Manor Lake that the township repaired, and lowered the water level, the lake was, had stagnant water, and it did not have flow. So, by rebuilding the dam, and I think we did that, the intent from Parks and Forestry was to put vegetation along the banks that were conducive to not needing a lot of rain, a lot of water, and would grow there and not make the water stagnant. Now, the other thing is, this Amanda talked about safety for her children, running back there, maybe get stuck in the muck, whatever it is, I'm wondering if maybe we can ask our BA to look at, or an township attorney, allowing them some right of way, because they have a very small backyard, to build a fence on township property so that children don't run into that muck.
Well, is there any other opportunity to put some sort of drainage in there?
We need, we need, we need to revisit that with our township engineer and Parks and Forestry, and give us a report.
Yeah, so can we have that?
So, hi, this is Fred, so this is Fred again, so as I said before, I have a note here that says to revisit the swamp, and that'll be part of that conversation.
Okay, so then we get an update on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amanda, at this point...
I'll give, like, one more question, Ken, Ken, how would Amanda go about, it's sort of, I guess it's a variance, is that right, Ken, to build that, to put up?
I need to see a map and a survey of the area, it says from the description that we would have to grant an easement to the owner to put a fence on our property, and I'll speak to the administrator, go to the engineer tomorrow about whether or not that's feasible.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate your, um, attention to this matter, and, uh, Jim, is it okay if I follow up with you directly?
Uh, you should follow up to the township administrator.
How would I do that, just to be clear? I didn't bounce around a lot.
Again, if you'd like, you can, uh, call my office tomorrow, ask to speak to me, Colette Madden, I'm the municipal clerk, and I'll make sure you get in touch with the administrator regarding this matter.
Thank you so much, Colette, I really appreciate it.
No, my pleasure, you're very welcome, and thank you. Um, at this point, uh, if we can, um, go ahead and, uh, go on to the next person, which would be Ken Dolsky, if I can ask Ken Dolsky to be unmuted?
Very good, can you hear me?
Yes, Ken, how are you?
Great, thanks, thanks very much. Um, I have some questions for Carlo, is he still available?
I don't believe Carlo is available, but you can ask your questions and we can relay that to him, and then we can get, get him to contact you or speak to you offline.
Okay, um, so I'll just quickly run through these questions and I will email you a copy as well.
That'll be great, thank you, Ken.
All right, so, um, it wasn't clear to me how many infected people there are in Parcipony today, I don't know what a closed case means. Um, my next question was, what is causing new cases? My third question is, are there any common factors behind the steady increase in COVID cases such as eating in restaurants, taking mass transit, going to supermarkets, going to private gatherings, not wearing masks, et cetera? Uh, my fourth question is, what is being done to stop the increase in cases? And if residents could help in that, is there any proactive efforts that are being undertaken to stop the increase? And the last question I had is about the turnaround time for test results that, um, you know, we're seeing on, uh, current tests. So, um, I will forward those questions to you, and if Carlo can get back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, uh, yeah, just forward them to me, Ken, and I'll make sure Carlo gets them, and, uh, we'll get, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Ken, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you, if we can go ahead and mute Ken. Uh, next we have on the list is, uh, Nick Homiak, Nick, you there? Nick? All right, Nick, we'll give you a second to get situated with the mic, uh, I see, uh, Robert Quinn, also his hand is up. Uh, let's go ahead and mute Nick and unmute Robert. Robert, you there?
Hear me?
Hey, Robert, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I just had a question, I know obviously with the pandemic, I'm sure everything has been, but, uh, we had former Mayor Mimi Letz who passed away last year, and, uh, former Councilman Vinnie Farrar who passed away earlier this year. Uh, I was just wondering what the timeline is for getting a plaque at Town Hall for those two individuals.
Okay, uh, good question, um, uh, Mayor, do you want me to address that, or would you like to address that?
Well, I, I think we could jointly address it, actually, we have the plaques here at Town Hall now.
Correct.
Uh, right now, considering what the priorities are, right now, we'd like to get them up and do it in a way that's timely and we want to make sure that it's safe, because we want to do it in a way so we can have the families present and honor them properly.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's been, uh, just to piggyback off the mayor's statement, we, we do have all the plaques ordered and we have discussed that fact, but the issue with the whole COVID nineteen, the building being close to public, the issue with, uh, the number of people that can come into the building. You know, uh, as the mayor stated, his biggest thing was he wanted, uh, family members and people there present in order for us to be able to properly do it. So, uh, at this point, I think, uh, it's safe to say, Mayor, we're still waiting to, to see what's going to happen with regards to the opening up of the building and, and what we're gonna have to do.
Yep.
But we will keep you posted, Robert.
Thank you.
And, uh, Robert, Robert, I appreciate your question, and I appreciate your, uh, your sense of urgency in honoring our departed people that dedicated so much to our township, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else, Robert?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you, Robert, uh, if we can go ahead and, um, mute Robert. Let's go ahead now and see if we can unmute Nick Homiak, Nick, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Nick.
Oh, good. Um, I, uh, the well drilling that's going on, the last one I understood it was equipment failure. And this says well drilling, which implies that they're seeking water. So, is that true? And are they seeking water because of the same thing, another well was depleted? Or is this something to do with the housing that Parcipony's, uh, expecting? And the, uh, the culverts? Um, culverts require a lot of maintenance, and I believe these culverts are directly related to Route eighty. So, does the town bear all the expense to replace these culverts? And the exact reason for the replacements? And is there any improvements in these replacements? So, anybody answer any of that?
Well, one of the culverts is at, uh, Veterans Park.
Right.
When you go over the little bridge. And that's township property and that's a township culvert.
All right, but is not the water in the culvert do, has to pass underneath the highway Route eighty? Isn't that?
No, it has to pass under a little bridge. When you go into Veterans Park and you go past the monument, make the left turn, you're going over a little bridge. That little bridge has a culvert there and that backs up with debris. Um, and it's been clogged up and we're, we're redoing that culvert right there.
And how often does the town maintain that culvert?
Well, it was felt that we need to rebuild it. And we're doing that.
And is it gonna be improved, or is it gonna be just a, a pipe with more stuff going into it? That, does that, does that culvert lead, uh, into a Forge Pond or somewhere into Detroit Meadow somewhere, doesn't it?
Eventually, yes.
Yeah.
But a lot of debris is stacked up at the culvert. Um, that has to be cleaned and dredged, so it's deeper and it's safer, um, for water to flow and, and not back up there. And it, and it will have, require ongoing maintenance, and Parks and Forestry will do that.
Hmm, all right, I was just wondering why it had to be replaced and not, uh, just cleaned or maintained. Uh, any idea when the plastic bag ban might come back into, uh, tuition?
At this time, we don't know, uh, Nick, uh, but I will say at this point, what I will do, Nick, is I'll have you ask all your questions, and then I'll have everybody address whatever other questions, if you have any other questions.
All right, and lastly, uh, is anything going on with an old river friendly? They said they were going on with something, but I haven't, there's no, uh, feedback or updates, or they're still using the styrofoam cups up there, and we had a previous promise. Uh, I was with Ken, Ken Dolsky, they were supposed to become more environmental and friendly and eliminate those products, and they're still in use at the Noel.
Okay, that's everything, Nick, that's all you have?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Nick, um, all right, if we can mute Nick, uh, so we'll have to get an update on, on that, uh, Noel issue for you.
You know, Colette, um, I understand that, uh, that the Noel is working with the River Project. Um, Emily, didn't you just speak to, uh, speak to Kevin about that?
Kevin did update us about that, yes. He said they're working on it.
They're in the process of working, I mean, getting certification, right? I'm sorry.
Correct.
Is Emily? Oh, I thought Emily was gonna.
No, not me.
Oh, okay. All right, so if we could get an update on that, if you would?
Uh, absolutely.
And, and you know, and why isn't the past plastic bag ordinance passing place? Why aren't we, uh, en, uh, enforcing that?
I couldn't answer that, uh, council member, I'd have to look into that. I know that initially it was suspended as a result of the whole COVID issue, they were saying the, the plastic bags were not healthy. Uh, if you, if you remember, we did speak about that, but as far as I know, uh, at this point, it doesn't appear that it's being enforced, but I can look into that for you and find out.
Yeah, please.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, uh, any other member from the public? Okay, seeing no one else, can I please entertain a motion to close the public portion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Miss Grignani?
Yes.
Miss McCarthy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go under ordinances, just ask the council and the administration to review that ordinance. Okay. Moving right along. Sorry?
I'm just wondering which ordinance we're talking about, I mean, is it coming up on the screen or?
It's, uh, it's the ordinance under introduction, it's gonna be for, uh, for an easement for utility pole. It's gonna be installing a utility pole, because they, uh, believe it's the Noel that requires electricity and they need to install a utility pole over there. And then, um, moving along to, uh, it's not being voted on until our next meeting. Uh, next, uh, we're gonna move to the non-consent agenda. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead, this resolution is going to require action by the council. Uh, it's Resolution R twenty twenty dash one sixty-five consenting to the appointment of Juan Uribe as the Director of Finance, Treasurer and Controller, and appointing Juan Uribe as Director of Finance, Treasurer and Controller to attach a precipity Troy Hills. At this point, can I please have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion.
Make it a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Carriffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, that's going to a roll call, uh, Mr. DePiero?
Now, wait a minute, um, half the motion is made in seconds, according to Robert's rules, you have discussion before you go into roll call. If we're gonna have discussion, now's the time to do it.
You're absolutely correct, generally we don't, but if you'd like discussion, we'll have discussion now, Mr. President, uh, so we can have discussion.
Okay, um, I, I'm concerned about Juan and committee jobs that are turning, I felt we had another candidate that was, that was, um, very equipped to have boots on the ground and start running. My question also to our BA is, um, how long are we gonna pay someone to overlap with Juan? And how much will that cost? Uh, that's, uh, in addition to my vote.
Um, okay, so, um, Fred, are you there?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
He doesn't have to answer that now, but those are questions I have.
Okay, so, uh, I guess we'll have, uh, Mr. Carr and Mr. DePiero speak offline about that?
Can I have a question about that as well? I mean, we had, uh, the council had approved a certain amount. So, as I understand it, Juan isn't gonna be starting the twenty first. So, Ann will stay on through till the twenty first?
Fred?
Okay, so I am speaking, can anyone, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Good, thank you, so Juan's first day on site will be the twenty first. Uh, our current plan is that Jan goes, that, uh, Ann, uh, does need to provide him some time. In my conversation with Ann last night and last week, uh, we're trying to come up with what that number is to, for the overlap. But at the end of the day, win, lose, or draw, come, uh, one October, Ann will be off and Juan will be fully here, if not before. But no later than the first. Now, there was some delay in appointing this, this individual in the interview process, waiting for me, and I appreciate that opportunity. Uh, and as soon as we come up with a better number, I will provide that to the council.
My question is, is council had approved a certain dollar amount, have we exceeded that dollar amount yet?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
So do the council have to vote to approve another amount? I would think we did, we do.
Oh, can I, can I add something? I don't believe that it was a formal, um, resolution or anything, if it, if it, memory circuit correctly. I could provide some, uh, numbers for you. It just was delayed so long and there was so much work to be done. You also have water sewer work and things like that, which is working on. I plan a meeting if Juan, um, the day before he starts, like, uh, maybe Saturday or something, just to get him back, um, started and be available on the phone as he needs. Uh, he, he's pretty well under control, so I'm hoping it will not be very extensive once he starts.
And, uh, just, just a reminder through you, Council President, if I may speak, um, we, the estimate that we had to have, um, uh, CFO Ann Cucci to continue on, 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 on a, on a per diem basis, uh, after her, her, um, uh, going over to Livingston, that amount was kept in mind for a shorter transition period to be earlier with Juan Uribe or whoever was picked at the time, uh, he was my choice then. But, uh, in the interests of including the council's, uh, um, input in this, the council, I, I was polled, wanted to have the new business administrator in place, so we had to then go back to that and wait to get a BA. So that delayed the process, that delay was done to include the council in that process, uh, and that's, that's why we went over the, uh, the, the, the proposed budget, but, um, right now, at this point, we are tied to this, I, I appreciate, uh, Ann Cucci doing double duty, coming in here at nights and on weekends to, uh, uh, help keep our finances still flowing. But, uh, it was done in the interest of a collaborative, open process, and I want to thank the council for their cooperation with that.
Any other, uh, discussion on this? Okay, so seeing, uh, no other discussion, I'm going into roll call.
No, I'm sorry, Colette, I was unmuted, I, I apologize.
No, no problem.
I would like to say something.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I think, Mayor, also, the reason we had a delay was because it was requested that you, uh, possibly put out a, uh, a notice to the Government Finance Offices Association, so that was part of the delay also. And that's how we got additional, uh, applicants. Um, there was a second applicant, as Mr. Carr has mentioned, and, um, upon seeing his resume, I felt that, uh, he had more experience in the finance field. He is a CPA and a Certified Municipal Finance Officer. He has prepared state budget documents, annual financial statements, and budget status reports. No, he does not have a CFO title. I believe this applicant would have been able to take over the duties and responsibilities of the finance office in a very short time. And, um, when you, are you going to be assisting with Mr. Uribe, I'm sorry, I'm pronouncing his name incorrectly, I will call him.
It's, it's, it's close enough, but it's Uribe, Uribe.
Uribe, okay, thank you. Um, would you be speaking with him during the weeks that he is not here? Maybe at night or on the weekends, can he come in so that you have, uh, a little, that he has a little better handle as to what's going on? Not that we, until the Friday before he comes in?
Yes, that was the, I just was informed that we're going to, um, appoint Juan, and once that's done, I'll make, I'll give him a phone call, and we'll try to arrange to come in earlier. If, at, you know, a weekend, whatever he can do to get him up to speed right away. And the sooner we can do that, you know, the better, and I'll be available by phone or whatever he needs to keep the town going. You know, it's a very serious situation here financially with the COVID and everything else that's going on. But I think, I believe that I can get it up in money fairly quickly, because you're all up to date. Everything is up to date, there's not, it didn't fall behind, because I really kept up with it. And that's the most important thing for whoever's coming in, so, um, be supportive to whoever you appoint and start right away, I can start tonight, whatever.
And, and, um, uh, to you, uh, um, uh, Council Member Greg Nanny, that, uh, through the vetting process, Juan Uribe has, um, quite the reputation for being a hard worker who's willing to put in the extra time, Saturdays, the Sundays, the nights, that go beyond the typical nine to five that any other person would do, but is required really for a CFO in times of crunch, so. So he's ready.
Also, I believe it was noted to us that he was, he had a salary range of 138 to 140. Are we within that salary range or have we exceeded the amount that was given to us?
That negotiation was done by our business administrator, BA.
I can answer that question, Mayor. So Councilwoman, I was not pretty to that original conversation with the salary range. He had requested there was a salary range posted. We've agreed on 145. I believe it's in the resolution, if that's provided to the council. A little lower than what he had asked for by a little bit, but I think a fair salary for the, for the, for the work that he will be doing, starting basically tomorrow, when we start ramping him up and Ann out. More out than in.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the topic? All right, seeing no discussion, we're going into a roll call vote. Mr. DePiero?
Why are you starting with me? I'm over there.
I didn't hear.
I didn't hear you, Mr. DePiero. Go ahead one more time.
You're in the wrong order, Collette.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Again, I apologize. Mr. Kariffi?
Before I vote, I just wanted to say that I had a sense of conversation with Mr. Carr representing this. And being that Mr. Carr is going to be the one that has to work with the CFO on a daily basis, I defer to his, his choice. He's the one that's been doing this, this work for some time, and he's been working with, I don't know how many CFOs in his, during his career. So being that he will be the one working with this individual for, you know, hours upon hours on a daily basis, going to defer to him. This was his choice. I vote yes.
Okay.
Let me interrupt the roll call. In the future, okay, I would let the council to follow Robert's rules. A motion is made, it's seconded, then we have discussion. Once we start the roll call, there's no more discussion.
Mr. DePiero, I agree with that, but in the past, the council has not been consistent with following Robert's rules. They've, you know, they've done certain things. If that's what you want, we'll do it strictly that way. Not a problem.
I prefer it that way so that everybody hears all the discussion before they vote.
That's not a problem, but I just want to note that we haven't done that in the past.
I understand that.
Okay, not a problem. Ms. Gagnati? Ms. Gagnati?
You're muted. I'm muted.
No.
Ms. McCarthy?
You know, again, probably I'd like to make a comment before I read what I said. The council's interview, I think with Mr. Uribe was sort of brief and so me and conclusive. But Mayor Sorianni, the business administrator, Carr, he's the best person and recommended him to the council for the CFO position to work through, as Ann said, what is going to be considered to be a very difficult period for the town financially. So I'll rely on them and their evaluation and judgment and vote yes.
And Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, we have three yes votes, two no votes. The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Uribe. Moving on to the consent agenda, at this time, I ask the council to please review the agenda and see if there's anything that they have questions or concerns about.
Yeah, I have a couple.
You go right ahead, Council President.
The item seven, the competitive request for energy services. Is that what we were talking about before or is that something else?
No, that's what was, that was what Matthew Kavanaugh had presented on before. So that's exactly what he was talking about.
Okay, fine. And then number 11, professional accounting services. Why do we need another accountant?
I would have to, you can administration on that.
I wasn't answering you.
I believe that's the company that's working for the store and water ring. I'm sorry, I didn't hear Janice's answer. Oh, Loretta, I, they're the company I believe were working with on the square and water ring. That's a study for us?
Yes, that's the, that's the company that's doing the study. That's Rob that we've been working with. And I believe he changed the name of the company. It used to be a different contract name, I believe. So that's what happened. Yeah, he's the one who's been working with us on that water study.
I did not recognize the name.
Thank you.
Anything else, Council President?
That's all.
Anyone else?
What I can say on the, on the collective action plan for the audit? And if you would, there's a comment about the purchase orders by the, by the, the auditor?
Yes. So what they do is they pull a sampling of purchase orders to check to see whether the purchase order was done in advance of the purchase itself. And many times, because of the size of the town, some things are purchased before the purchase order requisition goes in. Many times it's an emergency, sometimes it's things like that. COVID stuff will be probably on this for next year, but it's very difficult to control and get the purchase requisitions and purchase orders done in advance, especially in the size. One of the recommendations that I was thinking of to speak to Mike Hardy about is getting the purchasing card, which would eliminate this. So I'm working on a main break, I'm working on an engine. Oh, let me put a requisition in, let me put a purchase order in, let me get the signed purchase order. And that's really stops work. So this is the kind of common thing that happens with this. If we get a P card, what's called a purchase card, we assign it to a person with a limited amount of money and they could have gone and done that and it's pre-approved by the QPA, by Mike Hardy. So those are some of the ideas that I had to be able to avoid something like this. But that's what it's mainly about. It's not like someone going to the store, buying something that could have been ordered. That's not really what this means. But the sampling they happen to pick where there were too many of those kind of situations.
Was any of those caused by the pandemic?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mike.
Were any of those violations caused by the pandemic?
No, because this is from 2019.
Okay.
But I suspect we may see some of that in 2022. But hopefully they look at it a little differently, like, look, this is an emergency. We have to get the masks, you know. But for the most part, it's mainly due to things like that. The health department needed to get masks. They have to go out and get sanitizer. If they write us up because of that next year, I, I don't know what to say, but I doubt if they will. I mean, that's a conversation we can have. But I would consider in the future the P card.
Well, you know, the fact, the fact that they mentioned it, I mean, would you say in most cases, we're getting the purchase order?
What do you mean, Janice? Do you mean in advance?
Are we getting, are we getting it approved?
Well, approved in general. It's just mainly things that were ordered before, like car parts, when they're working on a car or mechanic is doing work or something breaks down at the Noel and they need a piece of equipment. That, that's difficult, but that could be solved by taking in that P card and controlling, say, so-and-so mechanic, you can go to ABC store for parts when you're working on an engine. I had a situation where they have an engine sitting there for three weeks because they didn't have a, they didn't have a purchase order fast enough. That, that's not good. I mean, that should never have happened. And I said, you should have called us and we could have processed it faster. You shouldn't be putting something on a block and then taking weeks to, or a week, even a week, to repair an engine. So that's the kind of thing that it really is. But for the most part, we do get quotes and purchase orders in advance.
So obviously, there is work that has to be done there.
Yeah, I, I believe we should consider the P card to solve that problem.
Are we?
And that way, it's pre-approved by the purchasing agent. He or he or she pre-approves that card for someone to go out and buy car parts from ABC Car Part Company. So that, that would solve this whole problem.
Have they mentioned that in the past? I thought they have.
Yes, they do, I'm sure.
Okay.
It's hard to stop that, but I believe that's something hopefully Juan or Ann and I can consider going forward.
And my, this, my other question was on the cancellation of the grant fund receivables and the reserve balances and the current fund and the capital funds. Were they included in the budget, I mean, were they included in revenue? I mean, is that something that's coming out of revenue? That's like 140?
Oh, on my, on the resolution?
Yeah, on the cancellation of grant funds receivable.
Oh, yeah. Now, what that means is that these are older grants that were not spent. And, and some of the grants we had the money for and they were, they became old. For example, emergency assistance in 2015, we received the money, but they didn't spend it and we ran out of time. So what happens is that the difference between the receivable balance and the reserve balance will drop to the bottom line of the current fund.
So what?
$18,000.
So 18 of that amount that's out there, that's 16, 18, 17, 19?
You know, like, I mean, for example, the distracted driving crackdown, you, you, they say max of $5,500, but we only spent so much, so I cancel that. I'm just trying to keep, clean up everything for the new CFO. And that's something we should do every year, which I usually do. And the municipal alliance grant, there is nothing happening with the municipal alliance right now. These programs have basically been shut down, so I want to close those out. We do have a new one for the current year. These are all expand done. So we cleaned it all up and the good news is that by doing that, people cannot spend that money. It's not available to them now and it drops $18,000 to the bottom line for fund balance.
Okay, thank you, Ann.
You're welcome.
I'm on the same track, if I may. In 2015, there was funds for an ambulance and that was, the money was not spent, so it was dropped. Are you familiar with that, Ann?
I'm not totally in front, it's not in front of me right now. But sometimes if we don't spend the money, I think last year we re-appropriated some money, I believe, to do another project. It depends on whether it's fully funded or not. I could look for it, Mike, and take a look at that. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I just got some email regarding that.
In 2015?
Yeah, they were moving forward with the project. It was being helped up for a number of reasons. But, but now the money's not there anymore.
Oh, for, for, is that rescuing recovery or one of the volunteers?
I think it was the press of the ambulance.
Okay, I'll check. I don't remember canceling anything for them at all.
2015?
Yeah, I'll check.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get back to you.
Anything else from the council with regards to the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, moving along to the approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Ann Cucci recommends authorization for payment. Number one, authorized payment of September 4th, 2020, regular payroll estimated at 1.6 million each. And two, payment of vouchers of September 1st, 2020 through September 3rd, 2020, estimated totaling at $2,945,447.55. Can I please have a motion to approve? Make a motion. Made by Mr. Kariffi, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Ms. Gagnati? Ms. Gagnati?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. At this time, we're going to go into the executive session. Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in strange circumstances. And the council will be claiming that such circumstances presently exist, whereas attached council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege discussion pending PBA 131A SOA arbitration, contract negotiation, acquisition of easement 161 Center Press Road Block 421 Lot 56, and attorney-client privilege, table, late community permitting issues. Minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved. The council of the town of Precipity Troy Hills, at the public base, will from this meeting get a motion to adjourn into closed session.
Motion.
Make it a second?
Second. Second.
We got a motion by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Ms. Gagnati? Ms. Gagnati?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, we do not expect any action from the public?
Correct.
Okay, so if the public, we can log off. We will be coming back just to adjourn the meeting. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask IT to put us into a closed session. Okay, we're back in open session. Can I please have a motion to re-adjourn to open session?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy. Second? Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Okay, motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Ms. Gagnati?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero? Okay, we're back into open session. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Gagnati, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Ms. Gagnati?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tonight and everyone have a great night.
Good night, everyone.
Safe holiday.
Have a great holiday, everyone.
You too.